Motion carries five to zero. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
And move with second and any further discussion. There being none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Number five, oath of office, Waringham, Michael.
Mr. Mayor.
Howard. Yes.
Before we start that, could I just say something?
Sure.
Okay. It comes to my attention today that we had offered Jason Wheeler of the water plant in Hillsborough, a position in our water plant for thirty-six dollars an hour. And I don't know how this is going to make the other employees feel. And I'm wondering why we did this.
The reason we did it was because the Kansas Department of Health and Environment had instructed us that if we don't, we're going to be facing fines. We don't have a certified operator in the plant at this time and haven't for two years now.
Yes, I thought your son was supposed to get certified to do this and give him the opportunity to do this.
He hadn't, he hadn't been able to do that.
Okay.
He hadn't had the training for it. That's how, that all kind of fell through the cracks.
Okay. H D H E regulations will be voted on by legislation soon. Marion is a class-two water plant and could move back to a class-three. Jason's only certified as a class-two operator.
Right.
So what are we going to do when he goes up to class-three?
Well, that'll be up to the new council. That won't be our issue.
That's my understanding. He's been unable to pass the class-three exams. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oath of office, Michael Howard. You step forward, please, sir.
Janet, where do you want me?
I don't care.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the City of Marion.
And faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the City of Marion.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Oh, you're leaving?
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations, man. You're served. Jerry?
I'm good.
Congratulations. You're served. Well, I take it with that, then I'm supposed to call for the straight-in of the city councilman Kevin Brookhold.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of counselor.
And faithfully discharge the duties of counselor.
Of the City of Marion, Kansas. So help me God.
Of the City of Marion, Kansas. So help me God.
Oh, I guess that's back to me. Amy Smith, please step up for this one.
I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge the duties of counselor. And faithfully discharge the duties of counselor. Of the City of Marion, Kansas. Of the City of Marion, Kansas. So help me God. So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of counselor.
And faithfully discharge the duties of counselor.
Of the City of Marion, Kansas.
Of the City of Marion, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I want before, my, I want my first real official thing. I hadn't thought that I was going to have to tell these guys to come up and get sworn in. But my first official thing would be, Tim, would you pass it to Tim? Would you give that to Janet? Janet, that is my, my water supply system survey that everyone in Marion needs to do. I've saved Marion the price of a stamp because an envelope was not used, so use it for somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. It's, I feel it's not only an obligation, but an honor to be in this position. I'm pretty sure that the other new officers, anyone that are not new, feel the same way. We are going to go through the business that was on the agenda already for tonight. When we get done with those items, which would be number nine through thirteen on the agenda, we will go into counselor comments and department head and department information before we do a public forum. During the portion in which the counselors will have an opportunity to speak, I've got some things I'm going to say. I would like to tell you that I've got a plan laid out with every little detail of all these different things. The truth is, I have so many pages of things I would like to do that we're going to have to spend some time talking and prioritizing, and we'll get to them eventually, I hope. I will give a little bit of warning to the council members that when we get to your turn to make any comment you want to make, we're going to ask that each of you start by saying something you like about Marion. So keep thinking. And we already decided Boxa can say he lives in a good neighborhood. We have, I think, a representative here from Blue Cross Blue Shield with regard to the city health insurance plan. Kelly?
Yes.
If you would introduce yourself. And keep in mind that other than Zach and Kevin here, the rest of us are fresh off the boat.
Okay.
Okay.
I can do that. My name's Kelly, please, sir, and I am your Blue Cross Blue Shield representative. So here tonight to present the renewal information and new rates for your March renewal. And all of you should have a folder. And on the right-hand side, I don't even know if that's on. On the right-hand side, I'm going to work through that. There are two spreadsheets. The first one is all going to be in black and white. And this is your current plan versus the renewal plan. You guys are still considered a grandfather group. So just a little insurance one-on-one, when the Affordable Care Act passed, any plans in existence prior to that were considered grandfathered in. If a group would make any changes to benefits or significant changes to contribution as far as what's the county or city, excuse me, is paying, then that would trip your grandfather status. You have left things in place since 2010, so you are still a grandfathered plan. It's a composite rate, so you have four tiers. Employee, employee child, employee spouse, and a family. And those rates are listed along the bottom. The good news, this year, your rates are going down. This is a reflection of the health premiums. I'll get to the dental on a separate page. I don't get to say that very often, so it makes me very happy to do that. And like I said, the benefits all will remain the exact same. For comparison purposes, because everybody is always curious, well, what does non-grandfathered look like? So where these are a composite rate, if you go non-grandfathered for a group your size, everybody's premium would be different based off their age. Those are the rules. So the second spreadsheet in there is going to be the closest pairing of non-grandfathered plans. And what we did was we just mapped everybody. On the very bottom left, you'll see options A, B, C, and D, and the number of employees enrolled within each of those options. We moved those over to the non-grandfathered. You are looking at pretty much a thirty-six percent increase if you would go to a non-grandfathered benefit structure. So obviously, my recommendation would be to stay grandfathered based off this information. Okay, so that summarizes the health benefits. And there is a piece in there for 2024 contract changes. There really is nothing significant there, just that if everybody, everybody stays with the same plan option they're currently enrolled in, with the current family members covered, they will not get a new ID card, they will continue using what they have. A couple pages back from there is going to be the dental renewal. So you have the current premiums listed on the top half of the page. Renewal premiums at the bottom. Your dental benefits are also seeing a decrease. And nothing is changing on the dental benefits. Those will remain the same.
Kevin, ask a question. So we have employee, I'm assuming that's employee child.
Mm-hmm.
Employee spouse, does that include child or is that?
It does not. So you have employee, employee child, or children. Employee spouse, and then the family would be employee spouse and kids.
Okay, that's the whole. All right, thank you.
The city currently pays for a term life policy on all eligible employees. And so there is a section for the advanced life renewal. There is no change to the rate on the life insurance. You are paying. It amounts to five dollars and forty cents per employee per month for fifteen thousand dollars term life. And like I said, that will remain the same.
And that's standard, not just accidental?
No, it doesn't have A D. Accidental death and dismemberment is a part of that.
Is that, so that's a benefit the city provides. Do the employees have the option to add on to that at that rate or whatever if they wish to?
There is a voluntary life benefit that we can propose. I would have to get those, those numbers. That would be up to the individual employees, yes. And it does require fifteen percent participation. And those are in age brackets. So depending on how old, how old they are would be the cost to add on to that amount.
When is our, I mean, I'm assuming that you're tonight expecting us to give you a?
It does not have to happen tonight. You renew March first.
March first.
So we have some time if we want to explore any of those options further. I did get a proposal to increase the policy from fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand if the city would want to look at that, just increasing what the city is picking up. That in there is eight dollars and twenty-five cents per person per month, so two dollars and eighty-five cents more to have an additional ten thousand term life and accidental death and dismemberment.
And I presume that those kind of options will be available each year at this time?
Anytime, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And it doesn't even have to be at renewal. It can be done off anniversary even.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good, all right. That's helpful.
Okay, so that is all the information on the right-hand side. So that all pertains to the benefits and the rates. The information, I will just leave with you on the left-hand side, gets into all of the wellness tools that are available to your employees because they are Blue Cross members. So those are kind of nice to see what other added benefits they have available to them, so. I know that's pretty quick, and you guys have a full agenda, but any other questions, I will certainly address if there's specific benefit questions.
Is the, is there, like, the decrease is great. Is that due to the amount of claims that our employees filed or what?
Yeah, good question. So being a grandfather group, there are three main areas that we look at when we rate your group. There's a statewide pool adjustment. There's your group demographic adjustment, which is an average age and gender blend. And then there's your group's utilization and how that impacts the pool. And so for your renewal, they initially were starting off at a five-point-one percent increase based off claims. Your age and gender factor went down five-point-three percent. So that's where we get to a little bit of a break there. And then the pool, the statewide pool, is actually down just over at one percent, so. So everything lined up.
Other questions for Kevin? A council member that, I brought up something, not because it was anything that I had given any thought to, I'm just asking the question. If we have the option, I don't know whether the city employees would have any interest in being able to have a, that'd be fifteen, or instead of fifteen, be twenty-five or buy in for more or whatever. Something we could look into, but my thought would be that we go ahead and give the approval tonight since this is not anything new. It's just ongoing what we've been doing. And I like the grand, grandfathered in, it's costing us less money. I like those things.
Yes.
Other thoughts?
I'll make a motion to accept the Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance renewal.
Is that?
Is that acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A motion to accept the proposal for health insurance renewal. Is there a second?
I'll say that.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes five, aye and aye, passes five to zero. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Nationality's end of number ten, M I H funds, Lang Real Estate presentation, Kristen.
I think the TV's turned off now. Okay. I'm already causing you guys trouble. I've had technology issues. I gave you guys all a little folder. If the TVs end up not working, I have a presentation on paper in there so that you guys can kind of follow along.
Is that your folder?
Yes, sir, yes. I didn't know I was going to have such a crowded house tonight. I've been to a lot of city council meetings, so.
Kristen, people found out you were going to be here.
That's what it was. All right, you want to scroll for me? So originally, I guess, I'm Kristen Mewee. I am a developer project manager for Lang Real Estate. Typically, Ryan Mills, he is also our other head developer. He typically travels with me. He wasn't able to make it tonight. His family and his kids are all sick, so I'm representing for Lang instead.
Can I ask a question right out of the box?
Sure.
Where are you coming to us? I know the company, but where are you coming to us from?
We are headquartered out of Wichita. I am personally from Cheney, so small town, kind of just like this. So originally, Brogan Jones reached out to Ryan and myself and from Lang in general to essentially present us with the four lots that you guys have been awarded the M I H grant for. Brogan did kind of debrief me that maybe a couple of members, with you guys being new or this has been, seems like going on for quite a while, but he debriefed on maybe the M I H in general and just the whole project. So I may be repeating a couple of things, but wanted to kind of go over this. So I'll kind of give you guys a little bit of history about Lang, what the M I H is, and go over what our goals are, what we would like to propose and plan to do, and then allow you guys to ask questions. So kind of a little bit about Lang. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with our company. Lang Real Estate was started by Jeff Lang in nineteen eighty-one. We've been in development and real estate since then. It is also family-owned. And we do lots of development around the Wichita area and surrounding communities, a couple of examples. We are currently developing with a lot of municipalities, considering Park City, Wichita, Derby, Goddard, Ottawa, and Lawrence are all some examples of a couple of places that we're currently developing. We develop commercial and residential in all of these areas. We typically, our goal, we love working with cities and things like that. We've done a lot of land development. It's kind of where our niche is. With that being said, we love to help the rural communities. It seems like we typically find ourselves in and help more, so. M I H explained, I guess I should just ask quickly, who is familiar with the M I H or what was originally?
I can't get the.
Okay. Okay.
Could she use the microphone?
Yes.
Go ahead and pull it down so you don't have to stand on your toes.
There we go.
I want just an answer to you, because I'm familiar with it only because my son is living in the third house from the top of the map.
Okay, very good.
I've heard his comments, so I know.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. So the M I H, what is it? It's through the state of Kansas. It's a modern income housing grant that you guys have essentially been awarded. The state of Kansas made this. The intent was to help rural communities that were low to moderate income to be able to afford housing. There's a plethora of different, I guess, little tiers under the M I H that the state is giving to different cities. But you guys specifically have been awarded the hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for four parcels. And that is going as down payment assistant to those buyers of the homes that go on those parcels. Who qualifies for this program? Again, in your situation, these are buyers coming in to buy the homes that would be put on these parcels. And the state essentially has a little chart that shows if you make X amount and have X people in your family, you qualify. So we can get into that more. I've kind of outlined for you, again, if I knew a couple of you were maybe new, so to outline what you guys have been awarded, per my understanding and conversations with Brogan, I think this was originally awarded in two thousand and twenty, and it has since kind of been sitting. I don't know how long or what. It seems like, though, there was some increase in dollars and things like that. So now, as it sits today, you guys have hundred-and-sixty thousand of the M I H grant for four parcels off Cobal Street. I've kind of outlined them here, just northeast of the school. So essentially, what this is saying is if you build four single-family houses on here, the buyers that qualify for this program are going to come in and be able to have forty thousand dollars in down payment assistance to be able to live in these homes, which obviously forty thousand dollars for any buyer is a huge assistance in being able to purchase a home that is safe and quality here, so. So you guys have M I H dollars, you have parcels that are awarded. What the heck does Lang have to do with this? Or how could we be of value to you guys and help you here? So essentially, what our role would be here and what Brogan has kind of reached out to us about to present is we would essentially develop, build, and then sell the homes that are built to buyers for you guys. So what that looks like, kind of unique too, is most people may come in and be able to develop these lots or be able to build them, but maybe don't have the in-house brokerage. We will do all of that together. So we're kind of the whole package deal for you guys. We would handle the development, the build, and the sell of these lots all with Lang together in one. So that's kind of what our role would be here, essentially, to be able to help you utilize these M I H dollars.
So it's a spec home per se, or you wait till you get a builder that, or a buyer then that is involved in the plan?
It's a, it's a spec home, yes. It is a spec home. If, obviously, during the build, if we have buyers or things like that, obviously, they're more than happy to put them under contract and roll forward. But if they're built, they'll essentially go on the market as a spec home for, for people to buy. A couple of our goals, and obviously, this would all be in communication and coordination with you all and the city members or anything like that. But from our perspective of our knowledge in rural communities and this grant and what this is meant for, a couple of our goals, if we were to help you develop, build, and sell these, number one is affordability. So obviously, this is intended for, you know, low to moderate income residents and to be able to provide a quality housing product at a affordable price where they can use those forty thousand dollars to buy the home. So affordability would be a definite priority of ours to make sure that the home was built and priced correctly to be able to sell to a buyer. Quality would be number two. Of course, this is something that we pride ourselves on, on anywhere that we develop, but creating a quality housing product that would be able to last in your community, look nice, and be able to be here for multiple buyers and generations to come. And then community engagement. We also pride ourselves on being able to work with you guys and have input from you guys. Obviously, you guys know the community and the needs best. So we always work with you guys to help decide, you know, what those plans need to look like build-wise, make sure all of that is approved, make sure the price is where you guys are willing to be, et cetera.
On the building, on that, do you use local contractors then?
We would like to use local contractors. Typically, we do. If you guys have recommendations or things like that, we typically do. And if not, some cities in previous experience have had it care or a want. So we would handle that ourselves. We would still handle it if you guys had recommendations. Obviously, we're more than happy and open to that as well.
Well, I know one of the challenges in the past has been finding an M I H home builder, because the home builders have to be certified to build an M I H, M I H house. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then yours obviously should be.
Yes.
Well, have that.
So essentially, I know this was kind of quick, and we can definitely talk and ask questions here, but what we're proposing is to be able to help you guys utilize these M I H dollars and get this rolling for you guys to be able to provide quality housing and to get these lots, single-family homes, built for four buyers and to add some quality housing to your community is kind of some steps that I've outlined. So what we see from our end would be, number one, that you guys approve us as the approved developer for this project with these M I H grants. Number two would look, we typically sign a development agreement with the cities. Our development agreement, I have brought today for you guys to review. I don't anticipate you guys probably voting on anything today, obviously. But that development agreement outlines that our ask of the city would be for you guys to deed these lots to Lang Real Estate for free. Essentially, that would be our, our development fee in all of this, would be the four lots come to us for free. We would also outline in the development agreement, it stipulates that we would have to start construction on all four of these lots within a year and a half of a signed development agreement. That could fluctuate, but that gives us a little bit of time, obviously, to get all our things in a row. But at least we have some timeframes to March, too, so you guys know the houses are going to get built. Along also in the development agreement, it stipulates that anything that we build, any plans, will also have to be approved by you guys, obviously, in coordination and work with you guys, so. Number three would be, if you guys are agreeable, obviously, at that point, you guys would quit claiming the deeds to Lang Real Estate, and we would be able to proceed with the M I H and proceed building. And that would be step number four for us to get started. Once those specs are all filled, obviously, Lang Real Estate would be the listing agent on those and sell those as well, so. There was a lot of information I just threw at you guys. So what questions, I guess, do you guys have regarding this? Or regarding Lang, or what our value would be of to you guys?
I heard you say, like, basically, you guys would work with us. Does that include, once we sign the agreement, that we would come to you or you guys would come to us and we would agree on, okay, this is what we want, the price point of the, right, the final endpoint of the selling, final sale price of the house to be? And then you guys kind of work it backwards and say, okay, at that, we can give you a, we can get, we think we can get a three-bed, two-bath, fourteen hundred, thirteen hundred square foot, whatever it is. Is that the, I'm just, what, how does that, what's that process look like?
So I kind of discussed this with Brogan, and he seemed to be on the same page. But obviously, this would all be up for discussion with you all. But originally, I just in looking at probably what you guys need or would, what would be sellable. And obviously, I'm open to hear your guys' thoughts. But we were considering probably a more three-two, like fifteen hundred square foot home on a slab was kind of what we were leaning towards or felt like there would be a demand for here. Obviously, you guys are welcome to give an input. But with those considerations, you would probably be in the range, depending on, you know, if it's builder grade, anywhere from one ninety to two forty sale price. Also, considering that the buyers would have forty thousand dollars down, that's a huge significant help to be able to produce a nice housing product out there, so.
In addition to the one, like, one ninety minus forty thousand? Or the one ninety would be the price that the seller would see? Or, excuse me, that the buyer would see?
Yes, the buyer would see, if you were going to build a three-two fifteen hundred square foot single-family on slab, the buyer's going to see anywhere from a one ninety purchase price to a two forty-ish purchase price. They're going to, though. You will have buyers and residents that want to buy those homes. The M I H grant, in your, in our marketing as a list agent, you are going to, you disclose and help them and tell them, you know, there's only so many buyers that are qualified for this house, and you essentially get forty thousand dollars of free money to put down on the home, so.
Just so I, because I misunderstood, I think, your answer. So once that one ninety or two forty or whatever is established, the buyer's forty thousand comes off of that.
Yeah, as down payment, yes. Just as down payment.
Do you have, like, other communities that you've done the same thing with, that, you know, that we could talk to or, you know, that you've done the same project?
We actually have not specifically done the M I H. We are very familiar, though, with quite a few state programs and have successfully completed quite a few state programs that are similar. For example, we are currently doing the Star Bond in Park City. We do C I Ds. Park City is an example. We currently just passed one. We do I R Bs. We've done R H I Ds, which is a rural housing income development. We just did one in Keenan County, Alachina. Towanda, we're working with them on an R H I D. So not to downplay this, but I think this, the M I H is, I feel like, something that we feel very confident that we've worked enough with the state on different incident programs, that this will be something that will be very doable for us, and felt like we could adequately tackle for you all.
That house that we're talking about, does that include a garage?
It definitely can. I would assume it's going to have a two-car garage, would be what I, again, all of, all of the actual details of what those plans would look like would be something that you all would approve. Typically, what we do is either, you know, come up with two or three different options with, obviously, your input, and then maybe you guys could take a vote or give input of to which one you think would be best. But that would all be in communication and collaboration with you all, and I've also outlined that in our development agreement.
So that's how we get from 190 to 240 or whatever?
Yes, yes. And I don't know, this could be up for discussion, but, I mean, you could have two houses that were closer to the 190 price point and two houses that were closer to the 240 price point, or vice versa, so not saying that all four have.
The same.
That would be totally up to you guys. It may be more convenient, or I guess maybe at a discount, if we could get a contractor out there to put up four of the same-looking-ish houses. But that would be something that you guys also would want to give input on, if you felt like it would be of a benefit to have different-looking houses, or two same, two, you know, so that would be all up for debate and discussion.
You guys would have no problem getting rid of those houses, but the demand for the first five, for anybody that isn't aware, was huge. The only reason we really haven't gotten the other four to go is because we can't find a contractor that's.
Sure.
So the fact that you're here, I'm through the roof excited.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that.
And this is for moderate income, so the lower income, actually, you have to qualify for it here. If it comes too low, then that you qualify for federal housing income.
Yes.
Then you would be disqualified from this, so this is just for that.
It's like the in-between gap, essentially. If you don't qualify for the federal, it's more of a moderate, where they don't have any assistance, but maybe they can't get into a home that's 190 or, you know, $200,000 price point. The $40,000 is a huge help for them to be able to get into this home. Typically, how long, maybe you said this, how long is the build time? Right now, we're seeing build times anywhere from eight to 12 months for a house. So in, just in the fact of Lang would be having to finance all four of these specs, that's why the development agreement specifies that we would have to start on all four of them within a year and a half. We don't want to put ourselves saying we can finance four spec builds in one year. So we try to give ourselves a timeline to be able, if we're financing and putting all the capital up to be able to produce these specs and taking the risk that we would have started and diligently pursue construction after a year and a half on all four of those lots. That could change. I mean, we could, if the financing and everything worked out, maybe we'll have all four built in a year. I mean, it all is just dependent.
So in terms of getting to the point where we would make that decision as to whether we anoint you as the approved developer, or however you want to describe it, are you going to get us something that we can review, or is this presentation yet?
I can send you this presentation. I've given it to Janet, and I'm happy to give the development agreement to Janet, but that was the extent of typically what we kind of present to you guys. So I have the development agreement in my hand today, but obviously, you guys will want to review that, and then maybe vote on the 22nd as to what that would look like for you guys. I'm happy to give any additional information between now and then.
Well, the development agreement's what I had in mind, so, yeah.
Just letting pass around to you guys.
Would you have some sort of, like, some pictures or plans of, you know, a typical kind of what you're looking at?
I don't have an extra, so would you?
Yeah, I'll see.
Just for everybody else's knowledge, too, the previous five lots were just quitclaim deeds to the previous developer, too, so.
Oh, it was?
Yes. Those are, all the lots have been given to the developers that have come in to work on these houses, just as a point of reference.
Anyone object to having this on the agenda for action at the January 22 meeting? Okay. So in our next meeting, two weeks from now, will, the idea will be for us to take a vote at that time. Now, if for some reason, you know, maybe you don't want us to because there's something else you might add, or whatever, you can let us know that. We can always defer it, but at this point, if you could be back with us in two weeks, if the snow didn't keep you from it, that would be great.
Okay, that sounds good. I will also send this electronically to Janet, and along with the presentation, if she wants to circulate that, and my email address. If you guys have questions or my phone number, you guys are welcome to give me a call, and we will plan to be back on the 22nd for that vote.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Janet, you're up next on airport insurance liability review.
That comes up, and I think it went down, or went up just a little bit, like, $139. It was what it is.
And again, keeping in mind that some of us are complete rookies here. Obviously, it's a city airport, and this is somebody, we do something if somebody's plane crashes, we've got insurance, right?
Yeah, and it's actually a three-year insurance policy, but it's paid yearly.
So that brings Daniel, bring him with the challenge on the third page?
Yes, yes.
Is it, I took it, that was the, I think it looks like that's the total, right? It says payable and three equal and. That's the way I wrote it.
The 5,000?
The 5946.
That's the total.
That's the total over the three years, so the divide is about three.
The yearly payment is 1,982.
Okay. And I'm assuming that's, this is similar to what we've been doing in the past? If it's just a renewal?
Yes.
Other questions? Motion, anyone? Just to make your first motion, can I, really?
I would move that we move forward with this insurance policy as it is presented here.
Second? Further discussion? On paper, hi.
Hi.
Opposed name? Five zero, motion passes to approve renewal of the airport insurance liability policy. Next up, James Masters, code enforcement, and the property at 202 Miller Street. And we know the gentleman, yeah, he's here, saw him here last meeting as well.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members.
Very formal, thank you very much. So this project, this structure, started on July 27, 2022, and I just want to kind of give you guys an overall view of where this started and, and kind of bring you up to speed where we're at right now with this here structure. So this is July 27, right here, these photos right here. Came across this here structure right here, 202 Miller Street, and this is on the back alley back there. And this is what the structure looked like at that time. The owner of the structure has since torn this here off and removed all this section right here, what, what I had discovered in the process, that there was a set of stairs that went upstairs through this section right here. And that's kind of been a big, big thing with this here. Also discovered that there was a cistern right here on the corner of this structure also, that had to be filled in. And so on October the 17th, I wrote a notice concerning this structure to the owner and to the tenant, Donald Delilah Belushi, I hope I pronounced that correctly, and Donald Wilson. Donald Wilson is the tenant at this structure. On November the 28th, 2022, a resolution was adopted for a hearing for February 6 of 2023. And we had a public hearing on February 6. And I can go back to. There's a lady trapped in the woods. In February, the progress of the structure, February 6, was this right here. This was where the tree was growing up, and, and this was the progress at the time. It looked like there was some kind of platform here. And this was the back of the structure from the alley there. As you can see, there's the set of stairs that's going up into it. And the cistern is located over here in this corner, still can't see it, but as you can see, the, the progress, the progress was, had already started before we had the public hearing, which was, was great. On April the 1st, 2023, I received a demolition permit from the tenant that's living there. Come May 1st, most of the demolition had been completed on this project, and I say most. Let's see, this is July, this is May 1st, right here. So I say most of the demolition. You can see the cistern there now, in the corner right there. You can see where the cistern lies underneath this corner of the structure now. But this was, this was where, where this project was, May 1st. Excuse my ignorance, but what do you, what do you have to do to fix that? Fill it in? Yes, he had to, he filled it in. And, and he has completed that part of the project, and that's been good. Well, at this point here, you know, I, you know, I instructed, mentioned it several times, that we need a building permit to start putting things back together and what have you, and the project just seemed to kind of come to a standstill, and I never heard any more from the tenant or the landlord on this project. Did another inspection on May the 10th, took photos, and there was still nothing had been done. In fact, it was, it was getting to a point where there was getting to be more messes around the yard than, than any work being done. And then I, I spoke with the council, and the council, on July 10th, asked me to bring a resolution for our demolition on August the 7th. And I taught photos on August the 7th. And some of this is just mainly the yard, automobiles here, see if I can get to the structure. So this is what's the structure on August the 7th. So we've gone from May all the way to August, not much has been completed on or done, and, the structure, there was a two-by-four supporting the structure right here, and it's just become dangerous, is what it's becoming. And the city council passed a resolution ordering the structure demolished. Okay? And I spoke with Donald about this structure on September the 25th, and I spoke again with Donald on October the 2nd, informing him about the resolution, as, for a resolution that the council was seeking bids to demo this structure. October the 16th, I did another inspection and took photos. Let's see, this is October the 16th, right here. And we still had the two-by-four in the backyard holding the structure up and stairs that didn't meet code. They're just kind of, you know, this is, that's a two-by-four right here. This is the structure that was being supported before. Off the side, it was like the way upstairs. There's a cistern right there, and you see it's been damaged now, and. And you see, we still don't have any progress from back in May on the structure. So the council passed a resolution seeking bids for the demolition of the structure, and the bids were to be in by December 27 of 2023. And Brogan and I, we received those bids, and we put those in the packet. We didn't look at the bids. One was sent in, sealed, one was not. And we put those bids in the packet, so you guys could see the bids for the meeting tonight. On January, or January 3rd, I spoke with Donald Wilson, informed him about the council meeting tonight, and, and he has since acquired a building permit. Because there are a few items that are going to need to be inspected to make sure that they pass our building code that the city has adopted. I'll go to our photos for today here. So Donald's made a lot of progress since October, and I'm glad to see that. This is the structure right now. As you can see, the stairway here is totally gone. The porch that was right here is gone, right? Basically, we have this upper portion of this structure right here, which I have no idea what his plans are. He's added a brace right here, and there's another brace right here that is, I have question, is questionable about the structure integrity of that, especially not knowing if it's sitting on a foundation that's supporting this up here. And there's a set of stairs that goes in right here that has been temporarily placed up there, but something more permanent with a handrail is going to need to be put there, and, and it's going to have to pass building code. This is another view. There's still a lot of demolition and debris from the project laying around, and I believe that that's what a lot of this is right here, that Donald has on his trailer right here is leftover from the building project. There was still a lot of debris up here by the house, right in this area right here, leftover also. Here's a better view of that post right here. I'm not, you know, I'm not sure what this is right here. If the post just went long enough, and it's just something that he needed to get it put together, but I said, it's, when it's all said and done, this project will have to meet the building code that the city has set forth and adopted. I did speak with the contractors today that submitted bids, and Donald Construction submitted one bid, said that his price would be okay in 60 days, and he's still, he could still do it for his price in 60 days. Vice Property Maintenance LLC said there would be a slight increase in his bid in 60 days if, if that was the case. And I just did that because I know that this is kind of a, I know that a couple, the council members know, know about all of about this project, as some of the others are. This is kind of new here, so. Any questions?
The cistern you said is filled in properly.
I have not been called for an inspection on it, and I'm not sure what materials was put in there.
It's not.
On the cistern. I just know that the ground, let's see, let me go back. I just know that that cistern's set right there. It, but, I'm sorry, are you kind of done right now, or?
Yes.
Okay, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Would you want to come up, please, sir?
Yeah.
First of all, I, I have been attending city council meetings although I wasn't on the council, so I have heard, you know, the times you've been here before and of course, I know you've been here for all of them, you've been here for some or some.
Yes.
I don't know Tim and Amy, but you heard Mr. Masters kind of walk us through, is there anything there that you specifically want to comment on?
A lot of the problem is, basically, I'm broke. I don't know if you know the property of one twenty-six fours. The garage had burned down there as well, they got a three and a half car garage that had burned down there as well. So when this originally started, I was also cleaning up that property as well. I had a guy that was helping me, about the time that the work quit, he got into some drugs really bad and I basically had to let him go. So that's when most of the work started, I'm gonna work five days a week. So the weekends is about the only time I've had to work on it personally. My son has recently moved in to try and help, you know, he's willing to help get stairs and stuff down, so. Once I got help in, that's when some of this, the progress started again, and then another part of it, basically just been money. Like I said, all the cleanup, I spent probably three hundred dollars just going, or more, just going to the transfer station, haul this stuff off, clean the two places. And I have a stack of receipts about this big I can bring in. So like I said, a lot of it's been money, you know, I've got to work five days a week in Winston, so you know, I have to track every, every day. So yeah, it's the only time I have to work on those weekends. So I mean, it's been a lot of the holdout, money and, and time. Like I said, plus doing all the work at the other place, you know, it's been spread really thin, not a lot of equipment, equipment to work with, I'm gonna have one decent trailer and that's about it. My mom's dragged old van and that's about all I had to haul stuff around with.
Do you go by Donald, what do you want to be called?
It don't matter, Don, Donald, yes.
Okay. Donald, here's where I'm coming from and I can't speak for anybody but me. When I announce I was running for mayor, you know, so you go around town and you go in the grocery store and the convenience store and whatever, and people that know you talk to you and tell you what their thing is. And I, I was actually surprised at the number of people that, what, one of the things they said was that they wanted to, the city to clean up.
Yes.
Or continue to clean up. I had, have anybody say, oh, you're too tough on, on the light and David property, whatever. At the same time, I think we always have to acknowledge when someone's trying. As long as the trying is not just a, you know, a ruse to just kind of keep the wolf away or whatever. So my question to you, and I, I think by the way, Mr. Masters talked, and why did he go ask if that bid would still be good in sixty days? Well, he must be anticipating that we may not begin to do anything for at least sixty days. How much time do you need to get this place to a point that you think he and you can, that he will agree with you that it's good to go?
I would like to, you know, get a time with him so he can tell me exactly what left to get it up to. I, I pretty much know on the back steps coming up with that, like he said, that one board and supports, that's the two things that I need to know from him and as soon as I figure out what I need to do on those, I, it's probably, I mean, the sixty days, I should be able to do it within that, I mean, I would hope.
I, I, you know, don't just say it because that's what we said.
No, I, I.
Be realistic.
Like I said, I, I need to definitely actually get with him and figure out, have him come by and show me what is not up to code on that and so I can, you know, figure out how to get it there.
Did you fill in the cistern at all?
Yeah, actually, it was completely full whenever I knocked it down. I tried to get down in it and I couldn't get anything to go down in it, I had to fit it with a pickaxe and I couldn't get into it. So I don't know what they filled it in with, but it's full of something. Because I just took the tractor, knocked it over, drug the bricks and debris out of the way and started trying to dig into it to see what was there and started hitting with the pick and I couldn't even get into it.
Could be Confederate gold down there.
My luck's not that good. Maybe some fool's gold.
So do you think it's, I mean, if, if we get an update from James at the next meeting in two weeks, that, that you've had a chance to meet with him and he's given you kind of a punch list of things that need to be completed, do you think, I mean, is that, is that reasonable between the two?
I can, I can, I can address several items right now.
Go ahead.
Okay. If, if y'all don't mind. Yeah. These things right here, Donald, right here, this post right here, okay? I don't know if it's a continuous post. Is it, if it's a continuous post, I, I need thirty inches of concrete underneath that there.
There's thirty six inches, but it's not a continuous.
It's gotta be continuous.
Okay.
Okay? Don't chuck rocks or anything like that there.
No, no.
This, this, this is going to be supporting this up here.
Yes.
Okay, I, this right here, I need to probably do an inspection on that to see if that's enough, right there.
Okay.
Okay. Your stairs over here.
Yep.
All right, they need to meet the international residential building code. Okay, maximum seven and three quarters.
Like I said, the ones that was coming down the wall.
Yeah.
I'm literally gonna cut them down to where they'll fit right up to the, that should be, they should be regulation if they were already attached to the building.
Each step has to be identical with three eighths of an inch difference in that going down these stairs, all the way down, that makes them safe, okay? Including the step coming out of the house.
Okay.
All right, they almost have to be certain depth, okay? They can't be any taller than seven and three quarters of an inch.
Yep.
All right, you need a handrail that anywhere from thirty-four to thirty-eight inches, stop, on both sides of this here, because there's four or more steps.
Okay.
Okay, this needs to be on the foundation down here also, at the bottom.
Okay.
Okay, so they don't fall away from the house.
The thirty inches down?
Yes, sir. And that.
Did I do that with like four by fours?
Yep.
Four.
You can put them in concrete.
Four by fours.
Yep.
All right.
Any questions?
Nope.
Is that basically it?
That, that is basically it, there's nothing major other than the cosmetic things.
Right.
You know, there are cosmetic things, but cosmetic things don't make it dangerous.
I was gonna say, I think from our standpoint, we need to make sure it's safe.
What about like the debris removal?
Oh, yes, debris removal.
Oh, yeah, that's what the trailer's sitting back there. I've got a piece of the fence, I, I mean, the last couple of weeks, I mean, you see what kind of weather we've had since I was here, but, you know, October, the next weekend, I think we got ten inches of snow, or I guess I was here in November, because like the next weekend, we have ten inches of snow, so.
This Friday and Saturday, probably good weather to work on an outdoor property.
Another one of my issues here lately, you know, the last couple of, three weeks, you know, is yeah, I haven't had much drier weather, so.
Anybody else thinks, but what, James, do you think you could give him, just for us, for tracking purposes, for you and for James, to have a, give him a written list of the things that he just showed up there, do an inspection, that there's a written list that's handed to Donald that then is included in our packets in two weeks?
As to what's accomplished.
Well, or even just a, hey, this is, this is the checklist of things that need to be done, you know, we can get status updates, you know, and it's, it's in writing then in terms of.
I don't know if James heard what you asked for, because he was talking to the.
James, could you give him, and this is, I mean, whatever, I don't know if you guys agree with me or not, but if we could get a, go do an inspection now and give him, and I know you went through a lot of things right now, but actually go through and give him a true list, written out list, typed list, whatever it is.
Yes, I can do that.
That you can give to him and then include a copy for us next time so that we all are kind of in the loop in terms of what the expectation is for completion.
Yes, I can do that.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
If we were to do, well, do you want, I mean, you're asking, do you, do you think you need a motion on it?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Unless the council wants to make, I, well, I mean, here's where I'm, what I'm asking, where are you going with that? So if James does that, do you want Don back here again next week and we're gonna make a decision?
No, I just think it gives everybody an, it gives everybody a target, right? That we can say, this is, this is what the end goal is in term, instead of, right, like, we stood here and looked at pictures and said, well, there's this and this and this, well, if James goes out there a week and a half from now and finds something else, well, now there's that, but we don't know about, I just think if James goes and does a physical inspection on the property, walks it and we get a full punch list of, this is the expectation of what's done.
And then tonight, we set it, we table this for a set period of time, bring it back up in sixty days.
And see.
The closest to sixty days that we get.
That would be my thought.
Any other comments or thoughts?
Yeah, because I mean, you know, like I said, once you get a list, you can maybe look at a, maybe a little more realistic timeframe, because if you have to do concrete footings and stuff and you start to get below zero, that's gonna be a little tough to do.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think it was ever any of, again, I don't want to speak for the council or the past council, I mean, it was never my intention to want to tear it down, but we had to get something to get off of Ed's center.
Yes, yes, I agree. So. I totally understand, I mean, yeah, it was looking pretty rough.
I think, because, I mean, as long as you're willing to keep making progress on it, I'm, I'm fine for, as long as we keep, continue to see progress, I mean.
Okay.
Like I said, I don't think any of us want to tear it down.
Keep communication, but I think that's important, you know, just.
I'll start trying to come to the council meetings, I don't, I will probably be late to most of them because I, I have to leave and work early to meet your own times, so, but I'll try to at least attend them for, you know, till we get this resolved.
What I'm hearing, I think, from the council members, Don, is that, and I like the idea of giving, I, I work that way, give me a, my wife gives me a list, go get this done, it's just easier for me to, or either get out of what I don't want to do or do it.
Right.
And I think that's good and it's bad, because it does make it clear for you, okay, expectation.
Yes.
On the other hand, it can be bad if you don't need them.
Right.
Because then we'll have it loud and clear.
Yep.
Here we still are. But I, I certainly agree with the comment earlier that I'd get it fixed up, make it safe, make it meet code and we'll all go down the road happy.
Sounds wonderful.
So the, somebody will have to help me, what's the closest council meeting date we've got to sixty days from now on?
I'm gonna get through all these notifications here.
I had a paper calendar, I had a.
Right.
The first meeting in April?
Yeah.
In March.
March fourteen.
March.
Whatever the first meeting in March would be is probably the closest that we can get.
Eleven.
The eleven.
I think.
It, it's possible that those meeting dates might change. So for now, can we leave it at the first meeting in March?
Yeah.
All right, is that a motion that? If you don't want to be, just say so.
Yes, I'll make a motion that James does an inspection to give, to create a punch list and then that we get a, a status update from Mr. Wilson, working hopefully towards full completion by the first council meeting in March.
Do you want it for any discussion or do you want it on for the decision on demolition?
I'd like to be complete.
Well, that's my, I think I asked the question, because on that date, if he's not up to snuff, do you want the ability to move forward with the demolition, demolition?
Do you think that's, I mean, do you think that that's fair?
Yes.
Then yes.
Second? Amy, seconds? Don't care if I use his first name, so if you guys would prefer, I'd do something else. I always call you Amy White, I don't imply.
Yeah, that's not accurate.
So that'll help me out, I'll just call you Amy. All right, we have a motion and second, the motion being to direct the, Mr. Masters to provide a punch list to Mr. Wilson, that Mr. Wilson will have to go by on what needs to be done to get the house up to code and that we review the issue of demolition, the demolition bids on the first meeting in March. Put that on the agenda for the first meeting in March. Hopefully, if you, you know, you're always welcome to come to council, if you come and it's all done, then we're willing to get to them.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Okay, thank you, everybody. The, the next item, fifteen, excuse me, fourteen, council department and staff reports, do we have any staff members that have anything they want to adjust to the council at this point in time? Well, you're usually good for something. I will tell you this, whatever you poured in this punch, my hands are all wavy.
I did consider that. I am excited about hearing the housing get going again. The last attempt was, I tried to get local contractors to do a fifth house, but the hangup was they would have to carry it, you know, and the financing was what kind of was the hard part, but, so this is great, this is good and excited about that, so.
That's it?
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to throw you.
No, I didn't mean for you, I meant for the department, Zach.
Yeah, just an update on the police department, Peyton Heiderbrecht turned in his notice last week, his last day will be next Sunday. He's been struggling with some things, he's gonna get out of law, get out of law enforcement for a little while. So that puts us another man short. The other thing is, since we've got some new people in, I wanted to introduce who we do have on the department. Aaron Slater is back with us, he was here for about five years before. And he's here again. And then Brian Edwards worked for about five years in the jail, he was hired in, I believe, August.
Yep.
And starts the academy in three weeks.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions about department reports from the council members? Okay, well then we'll go to the comments and thoughts from the council members themselves. Who wants to go first, we'll go with you, Tim.
There's a question, all of them, they get staked.
And I remember you were gonna leave with something you liked about Mary.
Well, I was hoping everyone said these are really big impressive things, so I can throw a little one out there. The other day it was cold nasty out and I know a lot of our city employees wear different hats and have to take on different roles and jobs and, I've always been happy with my trash service, I've always been happy with the guys that showed up and do things. The other day, they grabbed a bag of trash, threw it in the trash truck, ripped open and goes all over the street. And we weren't all happy, but you know, they, they took the time and effort to pick up what they could and they went down the street and came back and saw it was still a mess, so they got shovels, stuff off the truck, cleared the street up really well, threw it in there and took off. And so I just appreciate that extra effort that they put in, and just know that for our city employees, when you do put in that extra effort, it is noticed, even if we don't always notice it, that, you know, it's very much appreciated. So that's one comment that I will make on that.
And then go ahead, other comments you might have.
I know in our last meeting, there was a question brought up about the city, not, whether or not they're investing their funds for draw interest on funds that are on, held on accounts. And, you know, I didn't have official, a lot of the council, no one really had a great answer. So I went online, I searched, I looked at the numbers, because I was curious too. And I pulled up our, the city's budget on the city's website, which is free, everyone can access it, and the city budget, obviously they're gonna show our interest for the year because the year has to finish for the interest to be there. So you have to back up to the year two thousand and twenty-two. And I went to the audit for the city. And there's one, it was like page thirteen of the audit of the receipts, in which it shows the interest received for the year two thousand and twenty-two was forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. So for that year end, there was, according to the auditor, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars brought in on interest from the accounts.
We get interest every month on our checking account.
Yeah. However, if you go back a year to two thousand and twenty-one, the, the interest rates are based off the T-bills, I understand from the bankers, and interest rates were pretty much zero. So for the year before that, it was only like twenty, twenty-four hundred dollars, so big difference. So I was just gonna address that. And, you know, I was also questioned, well, if Hillsborough does that, why don't we? And so I looked at where Hillsborough was at, pulled up on their website, city website, and pulled up their year two thousand and twenty-two, same year, and they actually brought in interest on their idle funds of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So it's about five thousand less than, four thousand less than approximately than what the city of, of Marion did. So obviously, two thousand and twenty-three numbers aren't finalized yet, it's just a guess, well, for some it might be because of whatever statements come out, but I just hope that clears up any questions, because I had the question too. So that's, that's the information that I found on that. I may be wrong, I'm not a auditor or a accountant, but from the information I found, it was, and I'm happy to show that to anyone who has trouble finding it, where to find those numbers, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
Kevin?
I had originally started looking into that pickleball deal and I had gotten a few numbers together on that and then.
What's your good?
Something good for you. Oh, the good things about Marion. I like our park downtown and I, I enjoy the Christmas decorations downtown, I've always liked that. And like I said, I thought that the old Christmas tree that they are, the pine tree they decorated in the park looked really good. And then, I can't remember when it was, but it was one, I can't, I think it was right before Christmas, I was driving up Cedar Street and saw water running down through the curb and contacted Jeff Harper and then the city crew was out for about eight hours repairing a water leak. So like I said, I think we do have good crews that get on top of stuff and get things fixed in not always the best condition. in not always the best conditions.
So then she says, don't answer the phone if you call.
Don't answer the phone if I call, so, yeah. So, yeah, I think we have, like I said, I think we have good crews as well to do things like that in not always the best conditions and timeframes, but, so.
That's, you may speak further.
Um, as far as the pickleball deal, like I said, you know, I kinda mapped it out. I think we could get three pickleball courts in space of one of the tennis courts. So just kind of preliminary numbers, what I've gotten so far on the fencing and decor, drill the holes, and I hadn't got with Darren yet, Zach, after you had mentioned that he had that, and then, like, some nets and stuff. I mean, you're probably, you're at about eight thousand dollars so far on that, and then you'd have some striping and things like that, so, I mean, you know, I'm assuming by the time you're all said and done, you'd probably be in that ten or twelve thousand dollar range. I was trying to get ahold of some people that would maybe give us a bid labor-wise to do it all, and then see, you know, if we thought if we could get some of that done, maybe city crews on some help, you know, if we could get some volunteer labor or something on that, I mean.
Just thought, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm out of my mind thinking that volunteer labor could get some of that fencing put up, but.
I think some of that, I don't know, but, and that's why I'd like to get a good, kind of, labor on the whole thing, just like I said, sometimes it's harder to get volunteer stuff and people with expertise to do that kind of stuff, so. But anyway, that was kind of, I'd said that I'd kind of follow up on that, so I haven't got everything finalized yet, but I'm gonna guess you're probably gonna be in that ten to twelve thousand dollar range would be my, my guess. Like I said, about eight thousand hard stuff on the fencing, cord drilling the holes, and three sets of nets, so.
Thank you.
That's kind of where we're at with that at this point.
Is that completely the pains, are they expensive of all that?
No, but, you know, a lot of that turf stuff's basically already down there, that whatever, not turf, but the, the paint or whatever, the coating on there, but you'd have to obviously stripe the cords out, and then that little front part, you'd have to, you know, they usually are colored different. So I'm trying to get, like I said, with the company, to get at least a bid on what it would take to put that down. And that part might be one, part of, part of one of the easiest things, would just be rolling that, you know, the paint down and striping it, but, so anyway, I'll try and get this.
I really appreciate you following up on that so vigorously, because I truly believe that this will be something that if we do it, will be instantly used.
What I would.
You challenged me already.
One of my accounts is in, um, Wamigo, and they put six of them in, and they said that their, theirs are used constantly. I mean, like, when it's nice weather, he said there'll be people sitting there waiting, and they have six courts. Little larger town, but he said they have, they have lots of tournaments, and like I said, our rec, you know, we had a winter pickleball league this last winter, and I, I thought it was fairly well start for the first year.
Oh, it'd be a good.
I think it's, I think it's a fun thing, and like I said, it's for sure a fast-growing sport, so.
Fairly long tournament at Chingle Washington? I mean, like, you could do it all over, yeah.
So I'll continue working on that, hopefully get maybe a little bit more finalized numbers, but.
I'm gonna ask you. Zach?
I've got, Kevin stole my, my first positive, so I've got a different one, but I'll, I'll follow up on the, the water main thing. Yeah, I, I know we've had a couple of them here recently, um, and I know that typically in the summer, I think Landon's the first one to dive into the whole waste deep and get in the water. This time of year, that's not quite as much fun, so, um, thank you for that. The other thing, I mean, so Kerry and I have only lived here about four and a half years, but in that time, the amount of people when we're out in the front yard that drive by and wave may or may not know who they are. That's why I choose to live in a small town, drive down the street, same thing, right? You may or may not know them, but they wave at you, that's, that's what I like about Marion. And that's what I think is great about Marion.
Thank you.
That's my positive.
I actually have a question, and I don't know Landon or, or Steve, if you guys will know this. Do you know if we started construction, started construction on that hiking bike trail? Have you heard anything about that?
I don't think we've started yet.
Anyway, someone told us we had, uh, it had to be started by February.
It's gotta be started by February, I know, but there's some, it's fairly minor as to what has to be started on, I think.
I think we're waiting on something about, uh, where we cut through the trees.
Yeah.
There's only, there was like a twenty-eight, or, I remember hearing something about that.
Okay.
Nothing to cut that by, uh, did yet.
Okay. That's all I have.
That's it? Amy?
Um, well, I think my positive is, um, the schools here. If you guys don't know, uh, we have four kids, and then our second kiddo, Presley, she's autistic. I'm sure a lot of you have met her, but those teachers just go above and beyond, and not only for her, but for just everybody, they'll see her out, I mean, she, she's like a famous kid, but you will, you'll be in Walmart in another town, and kids will be like, Presley, Presley, and, and it's just the inclusion that these schools have provided for, for these kids, so I, I can't say enough about this district.
Excellent. What else do you have? That's it?
I'm white.
Yeah, good job. Well, my, my good thing is I've been really, really impressed with the, uh, city staff, and I haven't really had the opportunity to visit with, well, uh, that, that makes it sound like I've done a lot more than I have, but I've visited with various members of city staff, I planned to do a lot more visiting with city staff, but the, uh, instant, um, recognition of the need to get together and get moving on some things, and the good attitudes that, that I have found, has really been impressive to me, and I, I think it's a good thing, and I appreciate that. Now here's the long part, um, I told you council meetings are gonna run a little bit longer, but I feel like this, this is, I'm only gonna have one first meeting at this, and a couple of things I wanted to say. First of all, I've always heard that it's bad luck if it rains on your wedding day, I don't know what it means for us if it rains, snows, ices, the temperature gets cold, and the wind works, but in any event, here we are. Part of the reason I am here is because when my good friend, there was a point in time that, uh, they were looking for people to run for council, and I helped, I'm not gonna say I did it, but I helped, talk to my good friend Chris Costello, who's running for city council. And I told him that I was, you know, gonna be retiring sooner rather than later, and that would, you know, probably try to time it so that I could join him on the council, um, in some form or the other. Uh, I, I, it bothers me a lot that I did not get a chance to do that, but part of the reason I'm here is because I feel like I am fulfilling, you know, or a promise I made to, to someone. And, and the reason I talked him into it was because I thought perhaps we could do some good by getting on here. So that's just me being whatever. Other things, I had some announcements and some heads up. Not being a smartass, Tim, I think we can all agree on that. I didn't go look at the budgets and compare and whatever, I just called the bankers, uh, and we talked to the bankers. And, um, what I found was that we, one bank has no county funds, uh, that is Tampa State, uh, one has a very small amount, that would be very national, and then the, the big fund, the, um, I can't remember the name of it now, but I got it on my notes, see if I can just find it. Oh, the primary operating account.
Now, you said county funds, you mean city funds.
I, yeah, I've been working with counties a long time, sorry. When I say county, you read city, okay? In, uh, twenty-one, it, the, uh, operating account, primary operating account, it is based on the T-bill rate average, um, it returned four, four thousand, five hundred dollars. In twenty-two, uh, it returned in interest, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-nine cents. And in twenty-three, it returned one hundred, three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Now.
Sorry, my figures are off there by about sixty cents on that twenty twenty-two number, I rounded it for me, sorry.
That's why I wanted to read the correct ones in direct.
Get it out of the recording if that's what it is, please.
Now, what I took away from that was not that it was a problem to bring up the question, it was that, okay, I was pleased to know that we are getting interest on our funds, um, whether we're doing it the best way possible, whether there are other options that should be there. Uh, I planned, uh, my plan is, and I told each of the bankers that I want to talk to them and talk about how we are doing it, whether it's the best way to do it, whether there are better ways. I know that there is, uh, some options to go into the state, uh, pool that are there too, but, I mean, we have to talk about that, but that is something that I just wanted to, we followed that along, so I appreciate you doing that too. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Collin here, uh, for reaching out to Wichita State University and, um, their program for, um, public, um, administration, because as a result of that, I think we may have, um, an outstanding person, um, on the line. I think we have to land him yet, but, um, the, I, I'm not at liberty to tell that person's name right now because he hasn't agreed to apply, but all indications are he's going to do so. He is a, uh, he has, he's a veteran, um, city adminis, actually city manager in a much larger city than this. He has worked as an interim administrator before. He is at a point where he would like to kind of get away from being spread out as much as he is, and he would probably give up some of what he does to come to Marion for a period of months. We would have to determine what that period of time is. Uh, I'm thinking four to six, the idea being to allow this person who knows the Ps and Qs to, um, help us quit, not us, because we haven't all been doing it, but help the council quit just running around stomping out fires and start moving forward and planning things and getting things done. Uh, if he gives us the thumbs up, I want to move as quickly as we reasonably can, because coming into this position, uh, with three new council members, one wet behind the ears council member, and no city administrator is not a recipe for success in the long term, in the short term anyway. We might get there, but it's gonna take longer. So what I'm just telling you is that I'm gonna ask Janet, uh, to put on the agenda for January twenty-two an interview with a potential, uh, interim city administrator. If we get the thumbs up that, yes, he's willing to apply in the next few days, I'm going to ask Janet to, well, I'm, I'm gonna talk to you right now. I'm, I wonder what the interest would be in having a special meeting, uh, and having the interview so that we could potentially act on it on January twenty-two. For, before I let you respond to that, um, here's my plan, my thought, anyway. I, I think the interview would be done, uh, in an open meeting, uh, set here, just like we are right now, we'll do the interview. Up until the point that we wanna talk the, down to the final, the financial part of the thing, we'll probably go into executive session to do that. But the rest of the interview would be, here, we'll ask questions, public can listen, and, and we'll see where, where we go. Now, with that, would there be objection to a, a special meeting? I'm not, I know that to do that, we would have to, there'd be, uh, the, the people who have asked for notification, and I'm assuming the record would be one, I, I really don't know who else, um, would have to be given, uh, notice to comply with statute as to what the, when and where the meeting will be and so on, so, um, we'd have to get, rely on Janet to get us through getting that done.
Is there enough timeframe?
Don't know. Don't know, don't know, and so, we're not gonna do it if we can't do it legally, but, but I wanna at least have it, uh, there that we, nobody objects to the concept if we can do it. But I, I do want to, if not, then just count on, we'll ask if the individual, and if the individual says no, he's backed out, and I, I don't think he will, I, I feel real confident, but if he does, then obviously we won't be interviewing anybody on January twenty-second. My next thing, Janet, uh, also on the twenty-second agenda for discussion, not action discussion, will be, uh, the council meeting days. That, right now, it's every other Monday, and maybe I'm just the dumbest guy in the world, shut up, Boxa. I, but, how do, if you don't, if you don't know whether the council met last Monday, how do you know whether this Monday is every or other? How do you know if it's a meeting day? Um, but if it's the first and the third, or the second and the fourth, then it's pretty easy. Plan your calendar, you know whether the council meeting or not. If Monday's a holiday, then meet the following day. So, um, I want to talk about that. I know that, uh, the, the current meeting time works fine for me, but Mr. Wilson made a comment earlier about having to leave work earlier to get here. I know that there's some thought among council members that maybe our meeting time could be adjusted. Uh, I think that's another thing we ought to put on for discussion. And so Janet, if you could put those two on for us. Oh, council members. I'm, I, I know Kevin told me that he had toured the water plant and did the whole walk-through, the whole nine yards. That's a great idea, and, and I, I, for the meeting tonight at the reception for, oh, damn. I should have said, I, I wanna thank the three members of the council who left us tonight, only one of them's still here. But I should have started with that, but I so wanted to give that envelope with the stamp on it. I, I do appreciate, and I know that, and I know that not everybody was on the same side of the fence and everything on that, but doesn't matter, everybody, I think, was operating from their heart, they were trying to do what they thought was right, and I appreciate that, you're the only one here, so I'll look at you, Grue, thank you, but, I, I, you know, here's the thing, we gripe about public involvement, and then we wanna rip people to shreds if we get involved in public stuff, so, thank you to all, all, everybody. Okay, I just saw you sitting out there, reminded me of that. I, I talked to Tim and I talked to Steve, and, and said I was gonna.
Tim Lachabett, not Tim.
Oh, Tim Lachabett, yeah, where, I thought he was here, oh. I was pointing out that way, so that, that's, Tim's out there, I guess, in spirit. To Tim Lachabett and Steve about, um, council members con, getting with them to let them, give a tour, give a tour of the county shop, give a tour of the water plant, give, let's take a look at the vehicles we have in our fleet. No, county shop. I'm gonna keep doing it, city shop. And both were very willing to do that, my suggestion to them, and I talked to Janet about this, was that if you just con, because they're, they're out doing stuff, if you contact Janet, she can kind of be the conduit for you to line up the time, uh, to go take the tour. And, um, I, I think to save time for them, if, like, you two wanted to do it together, or you two want to, or whatever, I think you could do that, that, I, whatever you choose to do, but I'm gonna try to, and Kevin tells me it will be enlightening. Is that a fair statement?
It was interesting.
Interesting, okay. I'm getting down to the end, I really am. Just a reminder that these meetings, the, the recording of these meetings, um, are being telecast on cable TV in Marion, it's cable channel twenty, um, and they're on every Tuesday, on Tuesday evenings at seven. I don't know if they're just on after the meeting or if they're on every Tuesday, but Tuesdays at seven. They also, uh, are on YouTube, all you gotta do is go to YouTube, search MCTV, that stands for Marion County Television, MCTV twenty, two zero, live, L-I-V-E, so, MCTV two zero, L-I-V-E. It will get you to, unless you'll see Marion football games, basketball games, city county council, county commission meetings, and the city council meetings are there, and if you wanna refine your search to city council, it'll get you there quicker. And I'm encouraging all of you all, tell the public they wanna see what's going on, there's a way to do it. I, during that, I really, really hope we can improve the audio and video quality soon. Uh, I want to change the layout of this room, I want to change where we're doing our equipment for audio and video, and we'll see how that goes, but we've gotta get a better product, or nobody's gonna wanna watch it. And finally, um, to all of you out there in Marion land, um, give us some time. Give us a break. We're, we're walking into this, we've got one council member that for two years, I don't know that he's had what one would call the typical city council experience. We've got one that's been on for four or five months and was in the same timeframe. And we've got three that, and then perhaps Mr. Boxa, who goes and does research, uh, that don't know. I keep telling people, and they think I'm joking, that, you know, keep your expectations low, um, things aren't gonna change overnight. Uh, it's gonna take time, and it's gonna take cooperation, and it's gonna take, uh, everybody pitching in. I really, really want to get to the point where we can start having, uh, agenda items that are about this good thing that we got going, or that good thing we got going, and I think we'll get there. But, but give us some time. And with that, let's get back to the regular agenda, I am sorry, I will try not to totally grab on that long. So like I said, it's my only, I'm only gonna get one first time meeting. Public forum, those who wish to comment, come on up to the microphone. Sam? I know I've seen you here before, what's your name now?
This is my name. My name is Teresa Eads. I live directly across from City Works.
Yes, okay, Eads, okay.
Hopefully, on the day that all of you get to come and, or look at our City Works building, that property, hopefully it'll be a dry day. Because then you will be able to deal with what we have dealt with for over 15 years, which is continuous dust. We can't open our windows, our air conditioners, I have to clean them out on a weekly basis, if I have air conditioners running. All because of the drive conditions. And I know you've been here whenever I complained about it before. It has caused me to have issues with my bronchitis now. I've had three spells of bronchitis, just six, this summer. I'm tired of dealing with it. I would appreciate if you would do something about the drive. And I also understand that you're going to inspect the water plant, which, since we're at the very beginning of the water run, we've had nothing but chlorine down there that just about chokes all of us out. So I do appreciate your time, and welcome to the new members.
Don't run away, don't run away.
Okay.
And I want you to take this in the spirit which is intended, which I, I understand your concern and about, do you have a thought as to what might be done?
I would like to see the drive over there paved, if, if anything. I mean, put some tar down on it, do something.
Okay, so you're not asking for concrete or asphalt?
No. What I'm asking is to keep the dust down to where people can breathe down there. We now have a heart patient down there that lives directly across from the plant. And he used to work for the city. I would like to see that driveway taken care of.
Anything to question or comment from the minutes?
Land is back there. Would there be any chance we could get some millings or something like that to put on there to keep some of that dust down? Do we have that anymore? I mean, we used to have piles of that around.
We still have some, we'd definitely give it a shot.
There should still be some out here on, on, oh, right here by...
Yeah, there's some by our pole pile.
Yeah.
I mean, I think even if a person would do something with some millings and possibly some sand or something like that, or at least, I mean, part of it's, I think, the quality of rock that you get anymore, it just, it just doesn't seem to hold up. I mean, it disintegrates pretty quick, and that's, it just turns to dust.
What they've done in the past is they put the white rock down, then they water it. Well, as soon as that water runs out, guess what?
That's good for a few hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, my health insurance doesn't like me at the moment because of my episodes with the bronchitis.
Maybe we can have them look into like if millings or something are an option and try that.
I would certainly appreciate it.
If something like that would work.
You need to understand that this is a man who owns a car wash, so he loves the dust.
Yeah, I know. But I also know that if it continues, I mean, my dad and I have both been up here numerous times. We've been to the city building, we've complained. And we've gotten a couple of responses on a few occasions. And like I said, all they do is they spray water. And that's felt so intolerable.
What I don't know is, you know, what cost we've got here. But, Landon, if what Kevin suggested is something that you could take a look at, you know, whether you do it, or whether you come back and say, well, here's what it would cost to do it, or here's what we need to do it, whatever, but it's, I mean, you pose a difficult problem. Because that water plant, I'm sure, was there before you moved.
Yes, it was.
And so the easy answer would be, well, you knew what you were getting into. But I don't want to discount the nuisance factor of it. So I don't think, I think we owe you at least looking at seeing whether there is something we can do. Does anybody disagree with that?
For the dust. Now, for the water plant, what I'll tell you?
Oh, the water plant, no.
Okay, I say the water actually would go from the plant up to the tower and then come back down to your house. So being your proximity to the, to the plant isn't entirely...
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, good idea to ask anybody on the moment. And they'll tell you the same thing.
Well, let me say merely this, that everything I have learned since I got myself into this is that we've got water plant issues.
Oh, yes.
So I, I hear you.
I do appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, one other question to ask.
Are you Dad?
Yeah.
I'm Bob. Can, I put 20 some years in with Coca-Cola and Pat Bruin Company, however you want to put it. Our water has to be in spec.
Has to be what?
It has to be in specifications.
Oh.
We can't, you can't, I'll tell you what, here, I'm going to say, two months ago, Frank come over with the crew, and they bled the water meter off. It was pure white, and I'm not exaggerating. You can't, that's not in spec, that's a line.
We contacted EPA, and EPA sent out a water pull notice.
You got, it's got to be in spec because it's, it's easy way to look, well, but easiest way to look at your water, if you see a brownish tint in it, that's ironed. If it's a white count, it's lined. I had to go to Coke USA and learn all that.
He's got certifications.
To me, all you got to do is get that water in spec and keep it in spec. It'll, it'll take care of you however long you want to go.
I hear what you're saying, I appreciate what you're saying, I've written it down. We'll try to, I think we should follow up on it. Obviously, it'll get much more important than the quality of water. But I know we've got plant issues.
Yes.
I understand that, I'm not saying that. But what I am saying is, have someone that watches what he's doing when he's making the adjustments on the water quality going out. When I first moved in there, there was an elderly gentleman, and he kept that thing the way it was supposed to be. And I never had a bit of trouble with the water. But I don't know, I don't know who's watching it now, that is someone else's problem. But I'm running with a filter on my water line right now, so.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Wait a minute. What about the transformers down there set in front of the electrical building?
Yes.
Is them full of oil or not?
You really think I'm going to have the answer to that?
No.
I'm just making a comment.
They had been setting their, such as past summer. And we were told that they were going to be removed.
Yeah. I don't mean to give you a whole lot of headaches in one meeting, but them transformers, if they've got oil in it, that's contamination right there. Thank you.
We'll follow up on it, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Ruth?
I just have a few comments to follow up on what I said earlier. About hiring a guy from Hillsborough, who was an employee of Marion at one time. And Hillsborough hired them away from us for $2 more an hour, which makes him making $19 at the time when they hired him. Okay, I did a little research, and if we pay that man $36 an hour, which has been told to me, and the contract says that this will be renegotiated when we get a city administrator.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
May I ask you a question? I don't know anything about that.
Okay.
When you were saying it before, you were kind of looking at me, and I, news to me.
Well, you're the one that's going to have to say.
I understand, yeah, I understand. I just wanted you to know that I don't know anything about that. Is this, I mean, has there been an offer made and an acceptance, or?
Where has it been, a contract drawn up, and he's supposed to be in the next day or two to sign it? In my theory, or knowledge is fact, I guess, the mayor cannot hire that man. So I'm asking, who's going to hire him? Who's going to sign the papers? We don't have a city administrator.
Right, normally I would have said city administrator with counsel approval.
But the mayor cannot, he's not an employment officer. Look it up in the recs.
Do you see me volunteering to do that?
No, I don't. But I also wanted to tell you, if we hire him at $36 an hour, he will be making more than any city employee that we have hired. We have one employee that has 40 years, 40 plus years, and he makes $14 less than $36 an hour. And this $36 an hour is $4.75 more than Brogan Jones made. So I'm just wanting to know if this is a fact, and if this is really what the council wants to do.
Has anyone else heard anything about this?
This just came to me today.
I'm just spitballing here, you know? Obviously, you want to have, you don't want too much disparity among employees, but a worker doing A is not necessarily doing the same thing as a worker doing B. And it may be easier to get somebody to do this job than that job. There's a lot of factors that go into how much you pay one job versus another job. I have no idea whether, how this would impact on, let's say, people on the electric side of things. I mean, I know those are guys that are people that are valued, and you hang on to them if you can.
Yeah, but he's going to be making more than Steve Hart makes.
Well, and that's where I'm going.
And that's the most dangerous job you have.
What I would need to know, you made a comment that he would, I can't remember exactly what you said, but it was something like, would be the fourth highest paid water plant operator in the state, or a top four person?
No, I didn't say that.
What did you say?
I had nothing about the director of state.
No, no. But you talked about if we pay $36 an hour...
He will be making more money than anyone in the city of Marion.
Didn't you make a comparison to other water plant operators?
No, I said something about him being hired from Marion over to Hillsborough for $2 more per hour. But no, I didn't compare anybody.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, wait a minute, I did, because the guy that has 40 plus years in does work in the water plant. And he makes $21 an hour with 40 years in. So what I'm saying...
He's not certified.
Well, we hired Jeff Mayfield two years ago, who was supposed to be getting certified, and that never happened. Now we're trying to hire this guy who has a Class II certification. And chances are, this may be where you're thinking.
Well, Ruth, can I just say that Jeff worked at the water plant for months, all by himself? So he couldn't go get certified. I don't, I keep throwing all that information around because you have no idea what you're talking about.
What happened to the month that he wasn't working by himself?
Let me, let me, Ruth.
Well, there wasn't anything available, Ruth.
Let's, I, one thing, and it's going to, I'm going to put some rules of decorum together that we'll use for these, but I don't want to have exchanges. But Ms. Herbal is speaking to the council, and obviously, you're free to come up and speak afterwards, but let's not have back and forth here.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to say that we really need to think about this decision. And the mayor is not able to hire him, so I'm asking, who's going to do the hiring of this guy? Can we not wait till we get a city administrator in place to hire again?
Well, the, I, I mean, I don't have to answer that question, but I'm happy to do so. I think if the council decides that that's the right move to make, then we'll vote on it and do it.
It would be a council decision, I would be okay with that.
Yeah, that would be the answer.
Ruth, alright, one more comment from what I understand on this. You have to have a Level 2 certified technician required to.
Marion is, Marion is a Class II water plant, yes.
We don't have one, and we are required to have one.
Yes.
And there has been no other applications, there's no one else that has come forward, there's no other option. Basically, he was the only one who was...
I don't know.
I'm just letting you know, that's information I understood. So we're kind of in a situation, there was no one else even to pick from. So that's just, I was going to put that up there. That's what I think about.
Well, you have probably more information than I had then. But I just wanted to bring this forward because I just don't feel like it's fair to do that. And if the legislator passes the water plants, like they're going to upgrade them, maybe Hillsborough is going to go to a four, and Marion with an ozone will probably go to a Class III. What are we going to do with this Class II operator who cannot pass the Class III test? Going to hire another one? I mean, this is just for you guys to think about before we jump into the pool.
I understand, thank you.
Because I just, just think that we need the city administrator aboard that has some knowledge about this stuff.
Well, the good news is that if we get the person that we've been courting, he should come in with a great deal of knowledge.
I'm very thankful for that. It's something we've been lacking for a while, to say the least. Okay, thanks for listening, guys. And I just want to say good luck in the future for the next four years.
Yeah.
And do a good job.
Thanks for rubbing it in.
Yeah.
Ms. Mayfield, did you want to speak?
Well, I just said, I mean, Jeff worked down there, although he suffered months. Didn't get days off, didn't get anything. Ruth comes up and says that he never went to class. Well, he couldn't go to class. As anybody in the city, he worked by himself. So I don't like her throwing him under the bus in something she didn't know anything about. That's all I've got to say. It's...
Thank you. And I don't think that anyone disagrees, we've got to get kind of the water plant under control and do some things to be done. Thank you very much, anyone else? All right. I think that traditionally, a motion to adjourn, unless someone else has, I turned this direction.
I meant if you're in the seat.
We can end the meeting anymore without Terry here, just here.
Here's our motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, I'll favor I.
I am.
I oppose, any motion passed is by zero, we are adjourned.
Can I correct one misimpression? Reese Hillsborough doesn't have an interest. This is the new normal? You're supposed to be running the top one.